Sorry. How's today?
How about you?
It's good.
Same?
Yep.
It's nice weather outside a lot of it today.
It is nice. The nights are awesome. I like really, really cold nights.
Yeah.
I don't get any of those anymore. Okay, we'll call to order our study meeting for the West Valley City Council. It's June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We are at four thirty in the multipurpose room of West Valley City Hall. We will. So who else? Oh, Jake is online. Councilman Fitzimano is online and we're going to excuse Councilman Hoon, who is not here yet. And hopefully he'll join us. We have our minutes of June seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Any comments or a motion on those minutes?
We'll should approve the June seventeenth minutes.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thanks. Okay, we have our regular meeting tonight. Is there any changes or does anybody have questions about tonight's meeting?
No changes, ma'am. Good there.
And Councilman Justin. No changes? Any questions from the council? Okay. We have. Public hearing for next week. It is application S A one, two thousand and twenty-two. And we'll turn the time over to Mr. Lehman, who is on soon. To explain that to us.
Thank you, Mayor. Steve Lehman with the Planning and Zoning Division. I'm not seeing my video, so I apologize for that. As Mayor mentioned, this is an application by Justin Puchar to amend Lot One of the Western Flats subdivision. This subdivision was recorded in two thousand and eight. And it exists just along Flats Circle, as you can see, just south of thirty-six fifty south. So this is just a zoomed out version of what Lot One consisted of. And the next slide is just a zoomed in version. You can see there's a lot of trees in the back, but the lot was and is very large. It's over a half acre in size. Almost twenty-five thousand square feet. So there's been interest in subdividing this property to create one additional lot to the east of the home. So we have just a couple of photos for you. The first illustration is looking from thirty-two hundred west at the home that fronts that right of way. So that was the old homestead of the property that developed as part of the Western Flats subdivision. And the next slide is just looking from the southeast corner. So you can see a couple of outbuildings that would be removed as part of the new subdivision. And then the next slide, I believe, is the subdivision plot itself. So this plot will create one new building lot to be known as Lot One B. The existing home, as we understand, will stay on Lot One A. So Lot One A is just under thirteen thousand five hundred square feet and Lot One B is over nine thousand square feet. Just for the council's information, the overall average in the Western Flats subdivision, even with the division here, is over ten thousand square feet. I think it's ten thousand two hundred square feet. So relatively large lots and on average for an R one-eight subdivision. And that is our report.
Okay, thank you. Turn it to the council for any questions? No questions? Great job explaining it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move to Resolution twenty-two dash one zero one. A professional service agreement. And Ms. Cottle's going to take that one and she is in person.
Hey, thank you, Mayor Nicole Cottle. You might wonder why this is me. As you'll recall, I'm the staff member, executive staff member over Justice Courts. In fact, I'll have a presentation for you on Justice Courts in just a couple of weeks. And it has to be set up that way for state law reasons. So I am the owner of the Justice Courts. And this is a contract to re-up our bailiff service, constable service. We are, as you know, a very large justice court, very busy. We have a lot of people in and out of the courts, particularly now that we're out of, mostly out of COVID protocols with the courts. We have state law and AOC requirements with regards to the numbers of bailiffs and how they are to be staffed. And so that's all set forth by the administrative office of the courts. We have to comply with that. There really is only one provider of this service that is capable, in particular, especially these last few years, because we need such a high level of service and such a high number. Based on your knowledge of how difficult it is to keep people and to keep people that are capable of providing these services, this company has to work really hard to do that. So they really are the only ones that can provide the number of bailiffs that we need at the time we need them and in the structure that we need to require under state law. That's why we've gone with, recommend going with All Pro Security. The total cost is two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars and we have that in the existing budget. As you see, can answer any questions you might have about that.
Any questions? Great job. Thank you. We will now go to Resolution twenty-two dash one zero two. Authorizing West Valley City to enter into memorandum of understanding with the Utah Attorney General. And that will be Chief Jacobs that takes that one.
Good afternoon, Council. Colleen Jacobs, Chief of Police. I am here to present to you a memorandum of understanding between West Valley City and the Utah Attorney General's Office. This agreement would allow West Valley City Police Department to provide a full-time sworn officer to the Attorney General's Office for their secure task force, which is focused at human trafficking. And in return, they will provide us with ninety-five thousand dollars in compensation for that sworn officer.
Okay, any questions?
Is a rotating rotation, I mean, the contract, we have this Salt Lake or that just one year?
This will be an open-ended memorandum of understanding. And as far as who's staffed there, we would staff it like we do our other task force officers as far as who's interested in being there and on a rotating basis as far as need for both the agency and the Attorney General's Office.
So not just one person, we'll just rotate whoever's got that specialty?
They, they will train them on the specialty that they need for the human trafficking investigations. So it won't be like a monthly rotation or a six-month. The person that's selected to be up there will probably be there for at least a minimum of two years to be proficient at those types of investigations. No longer than, I don't like to leave them there for more than five.
Okay. Sorry. Go ahead.
How is the outline into our city is this, we are good okay here with that? Drop it in while we are in high level in the county.
There's a strong nexus to West Valley City when it comes to these investigations that warrants this position.
Okay. Seeing no other comments, thank you. We'll now go to new business and we have Steve Lehman again on S M I two dash twenty-two. A final plot.
Thank you, Mayor. This application is a request to subdivide property on the southwest corner of Redwood Road and Parkway Boulevard. At present time, as you can see from this illustration, there is an existing gas station and C store. Property to the west is proposed to be a new lot in this subdivision. Next slide is just a zoomed in version. So all improvements are existing on the corner piece with the exception of the portion across this property. And then public improvements again pick up to the residential portion to the west. Then we just have a couple of slides for you. So the first illustration is looking directly south from Parkway. So you can see the vacant lot. The property right now is void of any public improvements. However, with this application, the developer will be installing curb gutter sidewalk across this land. We did ask if they have a user for the vacant lot and at this time they do not. This illustration is just looking to the southeast where you can see the gas station as well. And then the last slide that we have is the subdivision plot itself. So the larger piece of property, of course, will be the gas station, Lot Two, located to the west, will be the new lot for future development. It is on C two, so that property is over twenty thousand square feet to comply with city ordinance. And that is our report.
Hey, thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll now go to our communication items. We have a strategic plan update and we'll turn the time over to Mr. Nord.
Good afternoon, Council. Mark Nord, Economic Optimization Department. You guys are flying today. I was expecting at least a twenty-minute heads up and now we got five minutes in and I'm like, okay, here we go. So as council knows, you go on your strategic retreats and you plan out kind of topics and different discussion items and then come back and we as staff go in and dig into those and then I have the opportunity to come back with either recommendations or potential concerns that we may have. And today I want to talk a little bit about one of those items that was brought up in the strategic retreat. And the notion was, or the idea that was brought about was to bring in an anchor attraction to our city. And what would be the possibilities of doing so versus and our limitations as well? And as we look at these anchor attractions in the context, as I was reading through the document that kind of transcribed the retreat, it was trying to identify something that would make West Valley City unique, something that would stand out as some of the actual dialogue was as you come into ski into the state. Why would you go to West Valley City? What would be the, what would be the draw? And so we as staff, we dug in and we started brainstorming about some potential things. And we looked at our kind of overall map to assess what are our unique identifiers? And the first thing, and I don't know if I have, I don't even want to touch any of this, but I might have Eric try and pull up the map that has the parks. And if not, it's okay. I can totally, oh, perfect. Thank you. So we first started out looking at our green space, looking at the overall map of the city and identifying how many parks we have available. Is that something that we need to hit more on? Is there something that we could do relating to parks that would be unique? And why we kind of started with parks was we've been approached by different developers to do unique developments. One recently was to do a wave park, an artificial wave park. The problem with these and the limitations that we run into is land. These attractions take a tremendous amount of land and they're quite costly. Where you have a private sector coming in and saying, hey, we want to do this. That's great, but we still have to look at the land situation. And as you look at our city, we're getting pretty built out. So when you start to consider areas that would be viable for such an attraction like this, you're looking at some of our birthright pieces, which we are holding very sacred, like our Lake Park residential lot area by Stonebridge Golf Course. Those are the type of acreage that we'd be dealing with and what we'd be facing. And so, but for a pivot from the direction that the council wants to set, these, these types of attractions are going to be difficult in terms of a, of a green space or a park or unique feature like that. All right, Eric, you go to the next slide, please. So knowing those limitations, we said, let's, let's look at all the things that we currently have that makes us unique. And I think it's often lost on even staff as you go through. We are quite. We have an embarrassment of riches here. We call it the string of pearls here at West Valley City because when you look at all of these assets together, I think outside of the capital city, there's not another city that can hold the amount of entertainment venues that we have here in West Valley City. So it's, it's actually pretty astonishing when you look all these together. So obviously our golf courses, USANA, Maverick Center, Harmon Hall, Redwood Drive-In. And don't forget the Cultural Center and the Amphitheater at the Utah Cultural Center. So you know, you have a lot of municipalities that would really go to a lot long lengths just to try and have these assets that we have here. And so as we kind of dug in and we recognized, wow, these are really great and it's all part of our optimization plan. We really need to be vertically integrating these and really making a collaborative effort. And I think as you look at these, they often operate as independent silos. The golf courses do golf. The USANA does concerts. But are we actively promoting them across both, across all of the platforms? And with the recent hire that many of you have recently met, Andy Carroll, my department's really taken a look at all of these venues collectively and making sure that we're vertically integrating them to make sure that we're getting the optimal benefit, not only for the customer experience, but also operational. All of these things tie in when we start to think about corporate partnerships. If we're looking for corporate partners in the Maverick Center, if we're able to show them the amount of concerts that are, or performances that are going on at Harmon Hall and educate them about what's going on at USANA, you start to get in the marketing term exposures. And that's what they value the dollar amount on is how many exposures am I getting? And so if we look at this string of pearls as, as all these great venues we have here, we just need to really dig in and really allow ourselves time to get a strategic plan together to vertically integrate all of these and make sure that the cross-marketing is occurring because this really is a treasure trove of assets that would be extremely costly to replace or to create if you didn't have them. We're already doing that right now with, with the Maverick Center and Harmon Hall. And I think it's just kind of as we work through that process of optimizing those venues, we start to incorporate, bringing in the golf courses, bringing in USANA, even though it's owned by a third-party company. They still very much work with us. And we start to really identify West Valley City as the entertainment capital of the state. When you go to see concerts after you go skiing, you go to West Valley City. And I think we have the venues more so than anybody else. Programming, customer experience and marketing will really help us drive that, that, I guess, reputation home. So our recommendation to come back to council is really, we have a great opportunity here with these existing venues. Now we just need to dig in and optimize them. And we now have an employee that frankly, we're very lucky to have, but for Deloy Hanson selling real Salt Lake, he's not working here. And I had to convince him to not retire because he didn't need the cash. And we have a great asset there that will really help us with his connections to optimize these venues. So with that, I'll turn over to the council for any questions.
Maybe I could add a comment as well, Mayor, if I could. So thank you very much, Mark, for that. And kind of wrapping it back around to the original conversation and strategic plan. We probably could have added a whole nother, it occurred to me as I was sitting here, a whole nother slide sort of detailing some of the things that people might think are small in related to question at hand, but might also fit into this overall discussion. Things like the globe outside of the Cultural Center or the Chinese Gate or the
Yeah, right.
Or the, what's the other thing I was thinking of? Well, the only head, yes, I did think about that, but it's at the Cultural Center. Right, like, like maybe our, our whole group of winds cultures, that sort of thing. And the reason that that would be pertinent to this conversation is I know we as staff, really what we're trying to do is kind of start the conversation, so to speak, as to what the council's sort of envisioning or think might classify or define what it is we're really sort of thinking about. We've had some discussion, Will brought this up originally in strategic plan, as I remember. We've had some discussion the past few weeks about the water tower out on, on the Navy land, which I think is a great project and we've done some work in the past to sort of preserve the option. But it's also really expensive to go forward and do other stuff too. So when Mark brings forward sort of the ideas of, we have a lot of destination attraction type stuff. And certainly we are already, we're moving down that path of optimization, like Mark said, that's why Andy was hired. We're moving forward in things like optimized plans with the Maverick Center, the Cultural Center, the theater, all that sort of thing. But yeah, yeah, I think in large part here, we just wanted to start the conversation, outline what we have, see if that fits or describes or, or meshes with maybe any ideas that you as council had that you'd like us to pursue and sort of these iconic kind of destinations. What does destination really mean? Is it more of a venue where you're bringing people or is it more of a like the Chicago Bean thing where you're really, it's kind of more of a piece of art that you're looking at and it does attract people, but it's not like a venue unto itself? So with that, yeah, just added comment to Mark, as he mentioned, turn it over to you, I guess, council. We just wanted to open up the conversation and make sure that we were moving forward with it.
Okay, council, any comments?
So let's go back to those photos.
I'm going to ask Eric to do that. Thanks, Eric.
Yeah. See how many we have, we personally, we own those. And how many is a private or investor, they own those?
Yeah. But for the USANA amphitheater, the rest are ours.
Redwood Drive-In.
Oh, excuse me, sorry, Redwood Drive-In.
There's not a lot of drive-ins left.
This is like, yeah, this is
It's just a movie.
And will it be here in five years?
Right, yeah. It's a good question. I mean, we've had a lot of proposals. We're getting a lot of interest from residential developers on this site. We have staff have talked a lot about this. There's there is the exclusivity of it because it is one of the last few drive-ins in the country. It's kind of one of those nostalgic things that I think everybody in Utah, if you grew up here, has a story where you visited Redwood Drive-In at some point with your family. But as we also know, the cost of ground as well as the demand for housing is encroaching. And so it's an interesting battle. Do we try and preserve this, hold on to it as one of those last cool things that, the cool drive-ins in the country? And if so, how do we, how do we engage to get the owners to treat it as such a cool commodity, right? Because right now it's kind of not getting the reinvestment that it needs. If it wants to stay that nostalgic drive-in, it needs a little bit of a facelift. It's certainly showing its age. But it's, it's unique. Really is one of the last.
I don't, I don't even going to have enough money to purchase that one. You know, that twenty-four acres is going to a lot of money for right now. But do you ever generally talk to them and see how to come to the table or how they want to do with that, the landowner?
If the council is, is interested in engaging them, I would just, would you like it to be as a preservation attempt to preserve it as the drive-in or would you like us to engage as, let's redevelop this into something great? I think that's the kind of the two paths and you, you know, if it's, if it's of importance to the city that we want to preserve this, we certainly think we need to engage them and get ahead of it before that. Eventually a developer will offer a number that they will take.
Yeah. I personally don't want to force the plan or have to, have to pick their own pocket money and pay for their bill. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Up to them.
Yeah.
And see how we can fit into our city. I have no idea. Yeah.
I think one thing that I haven't tapped into is that with this presentation anyways, is all the great places to eat in West Valley, especially. You know, international affair that we have.
One hundred percent.
And maybe there's a way to, to get a marketing campaign out that, hey, try one of these restaurants. It's perfect. You need a date night, come to West Valley, try one of these restaurants and then go to one of these venues. I don't know.
No, it's a great idea and we've actually been trying to push Chamber West to do the dine around like Salt Lake City and Salt Lake Chamber does. I'm constantly bugging poor Barbress. I think she's sick of me because I, I'm with you. I think that's one of our feathers and our caps. And it's exposure though. It's, it's knowing that what is the great restaurants to go try and if you just Google, I think it's kind of lost. And so I think the dine around is a great program that introduces a lot of these new ethnic restaurants to people who otherwise just don't come around this area often. So but yeah, one hundred percent. And eventually if, if the chamber is not going to do it, I guess we can, we will absolutely because I do, I think there's absolute value in that.
To go back to the ethnic groups, restaurants, I, I, I think the one we have thirty-three hundred, thirty-five hundred, seven hundred, roll the corner. Basically nearby the Collier Center, that's one of the very good location for to do something kind of advice, you know, city in California.
Yeah.
Beautiful. I mean, it's, they stay up really.
Yeah.
Still going out to eat. But I don't know, you know what I'm saying?
It's interesting, that Granger Crossing corridor that you mentioned there. We've tried different attempts to try and activate that corridor. I don't know if you guys remember Lee Logston, we former, he actually went over from RDA over to planning. But we actually had him meeting out with all of the restaurants individually and we had a little biz, small business grant that we set up. And it was, it was interesting. We didn't get a lot of lot of engagement, frankly. I mean, this was a great opportunity for those small business owners to clean up their facade, do landscaping, paint the building and we, because we really wanted to highlight the Granger Crossings corridor because it is a great sector of those multicultural restaurants. So there are limitations, I think. I don't know if it's just fear of the city or what, but we didn't get as much engagement as we hoped. Our, but we are getting a lot of activity there. And just recently, we, as you know, we had a redevelopment area set up for the Granger Crossings. And it actually collapsed because it hit the market cap. So it outperformed before the twenty-year period. So there was enough engagement between, you know, the Tong Katsu restaurant development over there and the, the Fat Fish development and, and some of the other things that it just, we're getting activity. But I certainly think we can, we can do more to really shine a light on that area.
Yeah, we were at Fat Fish last week and a couple I knew from Sandy came in. So they are So they are traveling for it. It's not just exclusively West Valley people there, so.
Yeah, Fat Fish has a draw. And people realize it's the same thing as Sapa and there's now another one up in Bountiful. And there's a lot of draw for it. I, I still get occasionally somebody asking for fog green papaya, which I'm sure you as council have all been asked about as well. But I try and steer them to the other new restaurant offerings that are there. There's many more than just even that section, but it is certainly more of a dense collection of them, so.
So on your wave park.
Yeah.
So we had worked with the county quite a few years ago with putting the wave park in the, yeah. So they thought about putting it over there.
Totally different group and I forgot about it. So yeah, we've had two wave parks actually approach us. So the Decker Lake one and the other group was looking more over off the fifty-sixth West Quarter. And the reason for it is in order for their, the, the business model to pencil, they were looking at a housing component as well. And so they needed surrounding housing. Think about onsite restaurants, onsite hotel. For an artificial wave pool, this is essentially a machine that creates a wave that you can surf on. That would be enough of a draw that you'd probably get tourism as a factor. So they wanted to incorporate the surrounding development around it as well. The Decker Lake was the wakeboard park with a cable system, yeah, which also would have been very cool. It had different limitations based off of, they had to do a pump and a, and a way to clean the water as the stormwater came in. But I'll have to revisit that group and see where they're at. It's been a few years.
Not even a.
I, I wonder if they are. Yeah, it might have, but I, I love their ambition and I love their, their little bit of rodeo that they went into the, with it. I, I appreciate that.
So the, the wave park you're talking about now is like Provo Beach?
There is one in Phoenix, there's only a few in the world right now because this, this technology to create these artificial waves you can surf on. You can do wave pools, which we've, we, you know, we, we even had those growing up. This is actually a, a wave specifically built to surf on. It's not one that you float in, so the waves aren't, there's not a bunch of people in the pool per se. It's just specific riders that will get on and surf it. So it's a different wave than the typical wave pool like Provo Beach. Unless, I might be wrong, it's been a while since I've been at Provo Beach. Is there a wave rider?
Provo Beach is like a surf rider, just a.
Oh, is it like the flow rider?
Flow rider.
Yeah, yeah, it's different than that because the flow rider kind of just flows up and over. Imagine a full wave park, and I wish I would have brought a rendering for this. If you Google wave park in Arizona, I bet you could probably get some renderings for it. But imagine with the.
I was just at Provo Beach today where they've got a hotel, they've got shops, restaurants.
This is a, this is a gamble here, but we'll, we'll give it a shot and I'll have to get the exact name. But the idea is to.
The rock wave.
Create this, I mean, it, it was really high-end, frankly, it was nice. They had great restaurants around it and, and I get the, the appeal of it. I mean, if you're a surfer and you have, yeah, I mean, you look at these pools here, it's not crowded with people. It's just a couple of people that take turns riding the wave. But the, the group that we were talking with had an idea that had a beach and people would be able to use the beach portion of the wave pool to kind of lay out and hang out and do all those things. So we get approached by groups with these great ideas periodically. And the inevitable complication comes up to land and where can you put such an attraction? And we are running out of our birthright, as you all know. So it's just, I think it's going to take something that really bedazzles you guys to the point where you're like, okay, let's, let's change direction and we want to go somewhere else with this, so.
And make sure it fits in the community.
Absolutely.
And that's the whole, we were talking to someone, we were on vacation, we did an orb ball down a mountain, a hill.
Oh, you did that?
Yeah.
Incredibly dangerous.
No, it's tons of them.
Okay.
We do that in New Zealand and the kid is telling us, there's not very many of these in the world, but we knew a lot of visitors went to Branson, Missouri, so we put one there. There's old and they won't get in a zorb ball.
How funny.
They thought that as a marketing fail.
Yeah.
Just put it in the wrong location.
Are you talking about like the, it's like the white clear? Yes, okay, I know what you're talking about, got it, got it.
It's super fun.
Was it, you didn't get sick on the rotations?
I'm very claustrophobic, so it worked out well. But I'm just saying, we have to be careful that we don't see an attraction that's so overwhelmingly attractive, but doesn't really work for the.
One hundred percent.
People that are around.
A wave pool thing makes sense in Arizona where they have.
Warm all the time. Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great point.
So it's just making sure it fits.
It's the right mix, you're right.
Okay.
Just another comment, it's great to see this laid out in this format and kind of reminds me what we have to offer. During the strategic, I mean, somebody had mentioned, I don't know if it was you or somebody mentioned like a, as a way to help get the word out, some of these social media influencers and maybe the same thing with the restaurants. Is that something we consider maybe contracting with some of these? I don't know how it works, but influencers to go to these restaurants, post about it, talk about it.
You know, we've, that's a great idea and there's a few, I mean, I follow a few because I get restaurant ideas for them. It is the new way of marketing, right? I think it's certainly something as we look at a collaborative, the string of pearls, all of these great amenities that we have. If we should be targeting those through getting the influencers to make sure that they're out marketing them. Certain, I, I have, we have not done that in the RDA. I don't know if the, the city as a whole has done that, but that's the way you get the news out now. So definitely a great idea.
Maybe we work closely with the Chamber West.
Yes. I'll bother, I'll keep bothering Barbara about the dine around.
She has brought it up at meetings.
Oh, good.
It has been put out into the universe.
Great.
It's not keeping it to herself, so.
Yeah, that's fantastic, finally getting it.
One thought, I don't know, I think we bounced something off each other months ago. The skate park is probably the most attended park in the city.
Isn't it crazy? Yeah.
Run by consistent.
Consistent.
Always.
Yeah.
Consistent. And people in Park City talk about it. People outside of the city definitely come to the skate park. Remember, we're building the bike track next to it and it's just going to add to more and more groups of people there. And then we, you know, Wayne told me a couple of weeks ago, there was a pop-up, you know, food trailer that showed up that we had to kind of chase out across the street. And I just think that's an opportunity when you already have people showing up and they're going to be at the skate park for two or three hours to make that area even better. What that is, I don't know. Talking to Will at lunch a while ago, I probably mentioned, there's a park in New York City called Highline Park. It's kind of a, just a cool environment to hang out while you're there watching the skate skaters. Or south of us, there's a color wall. Influencers go and people tag themselves at the color wall on all their social media. Those are just ideas of kind of what I think your, your vision was originally is, how can we just draw more attention to the good that we have here in West Valley?
I agree. Ms. Cottle always makes fun of me because for, at Abercrombie and Fitch, they used to have the, the little wings and everybody would go to take pictures of them. Like, we need the wings, why, why don't we have the wings? She always laughed at that, so. No, but to your point, yes, it's those little activation pieces that you can put in those areas where you already have groups getting together that just perpetuates it. One of the things that we talked about at Fairborn Station with Wasatch was we were hoping as we activate the space now that COVID's kind of ramping down and office is starting to lease there, that sky bridge is unique. I mean, there's only one other one downtown and it seemed like a great spot that it could be an activation place for Instagrammers to come and, and you know, go take pictures on that sky bridge. I don't know if you've had the chance to walk across it, it's, it's, it's just cool, it's just unique. And I could see that being an activation, but we need to have synergy. And the synergy comes from having spaces that are occupied by retailers, you know, be it a ice cream store or something like that, and then the office tenant tower being completely full. So we're getting there. The office leasing is taking shape. We have a couple big office tenants that are going to be moving in there shortly, so that'll be good. But that's what, to your point, yes, it's finding those areas that are unique to us and, and then trying to find how do we activate them, especially like the skate park where you already got a captive.
It's already activated.
Yep.
That's, makes the most sense. Good idea. And so on, on that, you know, we, we do our umpteenth buffet at the Fairborn Station.
Yeah.
And I went last week or two weeks ago, I can't remember, whenever they had the donut truck. The whole way a donut truck. The molasadas. But, you know, you got all these kids that are sitting there skating and if we had a, I think Holiday has a, a truck park.
Yep.
Truck park.
Yep.
Get some space there, just a, just an idea that can have some more synergy within that space.
Oh, maybe have food trucks out there as well. That would hit the west side again. Okay, that's a good idea.
And that's a little bit outside of my purview, but I'm totally happy to engage that. That's, we were looking at this more, I guess, more physical structure and looking at this form a more, you know, when you look at, and I can, I'm constantly, I know we don't compete, but I'm constantly looking what other cities have and making sure that we're achieving more. And I just think that the amenities we have here are really great. We just need to maybe, especially with this younger generation, get them exposed to it, be it through Instagram influencers, but also through our corporate partnerships. I really think that, I, I think you guys have seen an uptick in the, the concerts that you're going on over at Maverick Center. We're getting a lot more activity and we're going to keep perpetuating this optimization at all these venues. So really expose the state to what a great place this is for entertainment.
So yeah, Nicole said the veterans' wall.
Yeah.
And added to this maybe.
Yeah.
Then we brought up the skate park, skate park actually is a good amenity.
One hundred percent.
It's probably on the parks one, but I think it's even something that brings from out. So maybe if we publicize those, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe our PR just needs to. I don't know, do you just work with an influencer or do you hire one?
It's a great question, I don't know.
Who knows? Okay, any other comments?
I mean, I share the city's posts, but on the scale of influencers, I'm on the low end.
I always notice though, and I appreciate that councilman, I notice what you do.
Yeah. Thank you so much. All right, we have a general plan update and Mr. Pastrick is here to present. Mark, that's five minutes. Steve has two, I mean, ten, so we'll see how it goes. It's the same.
Mine might be five instead of ten, we'll see. So just wait for Nicole to promote me here and we'll share just a few slides. All waiting for that to come up. So last year we actually applied for a grant to help us do our general plan update. We learned a little bit earlier this year that we were awarded that grant. So we have thirty-six thousand to help us with that effort. And so the, the plan is to, oh, sorry, I just had the wrong window open.
I was like, you did. Is this like when my GPS, my mapping system has to tell me, just turn around, you'll see it. Let's change your screen.
That's right.
We all have our moments.
So with, with the funds, we're looking at bringing on a consultant to, to help us. And the idea would be to have the consultant help on the, the public input side of, of the effort. And, and I'll talk a little bit more about what we have in mind there. So there are areas that we want to focus on and I'll explain why we want to focus on these areas. So there's the north and south portions of Redwood Road, Thirty-Fifth South, kind of the commercial portion of Thirty-Fifth Southeast of Mountain View Corridor. There's this area more towards the southwest of the city between fifty-four hundred south and sixty-six hundred south. And then there's an area just west of Mountain View Corridor along Parkway Boulevard. So why those areas in terms of focus? So this map, and I realize at this scale, it's really busy. So I'll try to do my best to explain what we're looking at here. So the blue areas are vacant properties and you've, you've seen a similar map that shows vacant properties before. But what this also shows would be properties that we consider maybe have potential for more development than, than what's currently on there. Okay, now a couple of disclaimers on this map. So the, the values per square foot here, therefore are properties that have some kind of development, even if it's just very small, okay? And it's based on twenty-twenty-one assessed value, so that's another disclaimer. The other would be that assessed value we know isn't always market value, right? It's, it's for tax purposes. So this is more just kind of a gut check, if you will. So between areas that are blue, they're vacant and then these different colored areas, if it's a, a green color, that the value per square foot of the property tends to be lower. Again, that's, that's not just the land, but it's also looking at the improvements on the land, okay? So to the point that Mark was making earlier, if you look at this section of Redwood Road where you have the Redwood Drive-In, it, it's relatively low value when you consider it against say a, a shopping center, for example, right? The, the, the improvements on the property are relatively low compared to the value of the property itself. So one of the reasons for focusing on, for example, that southern portion of Redwood Road is you have a lot of those kinds of properties. Think the drive-in Lambert Floral, for example, where, where you have, again, relatively little by way of improvements on the property. And then another example, if you look at the area here to the southwest, you have a, a large portion of the little vacant land we have left along with some sand and gravel operations that we know at some point in the future, we don't know when, but at some point those will end operations and there'll be some type of development that will show up on those properties. Now, there are other areas where we have vacant property in the city, but generally we have a fairly good idea of where that's headed. So let me give you an example. If you look in the northwest part of the city, along two oh one, or you do have some vacant property there, we, that's all pretty well developing as industrial. We have a lot of big industrial parks. When you get down into this area to the southwest, we've, for the most part, have shown industrial and some larger residential to the south. But again, as that area changes, perhaps there's other uses that might, that might make sense there. So the, the point of focusing on those areas I mentioned would be, these are areas that we would anticipate change happening for one of two reasons. One would be either there's just a lot of vacant property or two, it's an area where there's property that tends to be lower value and might redevelop, right? Just, just given the fact that the property values tend to be lower. So that's the reason we want to focus on those, those five areas. And then in terms of what kind of input we're looking for would be looking at the conditions within those areas. So property values, the condition of the property, but then also getting input from landowners, development, folks in real estate and looking at the redevelopment potential or challenges of those areas and potential future uses. So while, as we look at getting input, that certainly doesn't mean that the city has to, to say that's what we want. It's just looking at the possibilities and then we take that input and then decide, okay, as a city, what, what do we want to see long-term in those areas? So it's just, it's a form of inputs we know that informs the future land use map for, for the city. So those are, that's what we're looking at in terms of the public input. And that, any questions on that?
Any questions? I have one after our meeting with the U today. Do we want to take a better look at that area as to what we want around that property to have the proper synergy they want?
Certainly could do that and, and perhaps that could be in lieu of. So if I go back to these five, part of what we want to look at is as we select a consultant and see how many areas we can cover for the amount of funds that we have. So we may, in that case, maybe look at the area around the, the hospital in lieu of, say, the area on Parkway, for example. Because that area is, the area just west of Mountain View on Parkway is one of the smaller areas. And so maybe. And so maybe the, maybe they're around the, the hospitals more appropriate.
Wouldn't you think that the Parkway. It's kind of already set in what it's, the direction it's going to go?
That, that one's a little bit unique and I'll, I'll go back to the map here and the reason why we were thinking that area, again, it's a little bit smaller. So there's some property, again, just west of Mountain View. And eventually we're going to have that road that kind of parallels Mountain View extend down to Parkway. So you've got north of the canal, you have a lot of industrial and then south. There's not a lot of development in that area right or just south of the canal. We've, we've traditionally shown kind of larger residential, but with the road extension, maybe there's, there's a potential for change, but. But again, that's, that's the reason for that to just given some of the changes that are happening in that area.
One concern I have is 41 Resett and Redwood Road. You see that old paper? Or that apartment, I think it's four, eight, four, eight or four, five units. I think it's almost done and I'm concerned that it's. Not, not big enough to. To have that tiny man. Is that, do you hear anything from the store idea? They're gonna, then they're gonna put a bit bigger.
I know economic development had reached out to them about potentially expanding and just my understanding is they didn't have plans to, to expand. But that, that's been maybe a year or two ago that we had those, those conversations.
Hey, anything else? Saying none? Thank you.
Thank you.
Council calendar, any questions or comments on that one? So potential future agenda items. Anybody have anything?
Just the, I sent out the KPIs yesterday.
Yeah.
And I think we've only got three responses, so we need to get four more, so. I sent it on the group me.
Yeah.
Good.
You should be able to do it on your phone. Just turn it sideways, you can see everything. Hopefully it's easy enough.
A couple of things, Mayor. First thing is on Lasser Street, between Crystal Avenue to. 31 Resett and we have about six streets there and four have the dead end side, but two is then. They don't have them, so I just wonder, Celli Avenue or some Reso Avenue. So maybe if you have some. Way, public work, maybe you can take a look at those streets right there and try to figure out the side for them. Yeah. Second thing is Southern Center, we talked about three weeks ago, three or four weeks ago and I wonder if we're gonna put it on. Agenda to vote for.
It's on the planning commission agenda.
It's gotta go through them first.
Yeah.
They're considering the 22nd?
We're gonna have it sometime July.
Or August.
Yeah, hopefully July, mid-July, early August.
We may have discussed this before, but this presentation just reminded me, the area just west of Mountain View, right around 3,100 South. I live just west of there and. My neighbors, I, I get more complaints from that area than any. Issue. There's a lot of makeshift structures and. That's not our property.
Talking about like the corral stuff, yeah, we're working on it.
And it's.
And have been.
It's now moved across the street.
Yeah, we're in discussions, most of that, if not all, that's on by Rocky Mountain Power, trying to work with them to take care of it. And by take care of it, I mean end leases they have and get them out of there. They haven't proven completely cooperative yet, but we're still working.
Yeah, that's the one I get the most complaints on as well. See nothing else? Council reports. That's done.
In the Healthy West Valley. Coalition meeting today. Just wanted to report on a couple of things that happened. Project Cornucopia. Pastor Vanetta. Last Saturday. She reported that they helped 700 plus families during that project. And there were a lot of vendors, distributors, presenters there. A lot of the information on being healthy and how to stay healthy, got after a lot of families. Somebody said, well, it seemed like there were more than a thousand people there. And she said, well, you got to remember a family is. Sometimes three or four people come to pick up food and take it home, so. So they had a, a good turnout. And she wanted to thank the, the city and, and. Healthy West Valley for the help they gave. Neighborhood services is involved with that quite extensively too.
Is she the pastor of the church over on, sorry to interrupt, the, the church over on 31 and 36 or is it a different one?
It's 40. 41. And 32.
31, 32, okay.
Russ and the holiday and.
Gotcha.
Yellow Conviims. But, and she does quite a. Good food bank there.
Oh, good.
Weekly basis too, so. Also Hunter Library is offering some self-help workshops for the next few months on the second Tuesday. Of each month, about the same time as we're here. So hopefully none of us need some of that self-help. They'll be doing that. And our coalition did receive a grant on. It's entitled Health and All Policies, so that they're developing a work group now to see how to use that grant and. Help us as we write policies for the city. Include overall health in, in the policy rather than. Bring it all together, so all these different silos. Quite a bit going on and they, most of them will be at Westus this weekend to. Help too.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Do you have a need for a closed session? Okay, one last action.
We'll go adjourned.
Thank you. All fair and please say aye. We are adjourned.